The regular Evlith City Council meeting scheduled for 5:00 PM February 7th will now come to order. Roll call.
Counsel Rousey.
Yeah.
Counsel Koyvenen.
Here.
Counsel Purpich.
Here.
Counsel Lillis.
Here.
Mayor Visolovic.
Here.
Item C, approval of minutes. Minutes of City Council workshop meeting, January 12th, minutes of City Council meeting, January 17th, and the minutes of special City Council meeting, January 31st. If no one has any questions, changes, or additions, I'll call for a motion that we approve these minutes.
So moved.
Motion made by Rousey, we have a support.
I'll support.
Support by Purpich. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item D, approval of tonight's agenda. We are gonna delete item number seven under new business. Need some more discussion on that, as per the request of the Public Works Director. Anybody else have any changes or additions on the agenda? If not, then I'll call for a motion that we approve tonight's agenda with that change.
So moved.
Motion made by Lillis, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Koyvenen. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Appointments and presentations. Should we take the appointments individually?
I think you should.
Okay. Reappointment of Paul Muich to the Planning Commission. Motion that we reappoint Paul?
So moved.
Motion made by Koyvenen, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Rousey. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Reappointment of Tom Cundy to the Planning Commission.
So moved.
Motion made by Lillis, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Purpich. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Tell you what, I really gotta thank these guys for signing up for another tour.
Yes.
They've been on for quite a while, and I think they do a good job.
Absolutely.
It helps that experience, and they're devoting the time. It's really a big deal nowadays.
You know, Tom's a carpenter by trade, and it really helps to have someone and experiences and lots of things to have him in our... Appreciate it. And of course, Paul, always busy, but I'm glad he's there too.
Yep. And I'm really thankful to have these gentlemen offer to be reappointed. Consent agenda. Approval of claims, January 2023. Approval of payroll, January 1st through the 15th. Approval of payroll, January 16th through 31st, and travel requests for firefighters. If no one has any objections on anything or questions, I'd just like to approve the consent agenda as it stands.
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Koyvenen, support by Rousey. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item G, public hearings. At this point, I will suspend the regular council meeting and open up the public hearing on a proposed MediaCom franchise agreement between the city of Evlith and MediaCom Minnesota. Is anyone here from the audience for the hearing? Anybody on the council have anything to add? If not, I will adjourn the public hearing. And at this point, I will reopen the regular council meeting, reconvene it. H, no unfinished business. Item number one, the new business. Resolution approving Rockwood School Transportation Improvements Plan. Anybody have any questions? Dwayne, you wanna give us a recap?
Tom? Hey, can you hear me now? Does that work?
Yeah, I think so.
Um, so I'm Dwayne Hill. I'm the Mindot District Engineer.
And I'm Joe Ballis, and I'm the St. Louis County Public Works Director.
So we've been here to talk about this concept for safety improvements for Rockwood School at a work session in the past. I just wanna kind of summarize what the concept is real briefly. This is all predicated on trying to make a safer access for the students at the new Rockwood Schools and for the community. So we packaged together a series of ideas to help improve the transportation systems at the school. So kind of some of the key factors that we looked at as we're developing this concept were making sure we had safe access, providing new infrastructure. So our pavement is in poor condition on Highway 53 outside of Evlith, and the bridge attack over, the period 53 over 37 are also in need of work. So the goal of this project includes addressing those issues, and then the last goal was improving the death rate in the school system and our own. So we developed this project kind of as a package, and it includes improving the progress parkway intersection by installing roundabout, improving Hackett Avenue by creating an offset intersection, improving Oregon Road by adjusting the frontage road and adjusting the turn lanes. Component four is a city progress pathway from Highway 37 up to the school. Component five is replacing the bridges, the period 53 over 37, and then component six is resurfacing. And I can share that Mindot and the county of Gwenty looking for funding to cover some of these needs, and we just recently have highway safety improvement funds designated for the progress pathway intersection and Hackett Avenue intersections. So we have partial funding for this complete project, which is about a $40 million project right now. So what we're asking for is a couple of things. A resolution of support of the concept, kind of having all these things together as one major safety improvement. And then the other things that we're looking for are letters of support. And we pursue funding through USDOC. We're developing a grant application for a program called RAISE, which would potentially provide up to $25 million in funding for this project. And then the third thing was a letter of support for Mindot's corridors of commerce project, which could potentially provide bond funding for the Mindot portion of the project, which would help with the local share. And then Paul's, Jim, if you have any to add?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counselors. And yeah, thanks, Wayne. You know, you just both, you know, said everything. So I don't know what to say about it. No, but as Wayne said, you know, first and foremost, this is a safety project. This is really being driven by, you know, the new school. So now that there was existing safety issues that need to be addressed at the intersections out on Front Highway 53 as well. So it's a safety project first and foremost. It's a full multimodal solution that we're looking at. So not only these components that Dwayne just went over, but as you know, we've been working with the city on a much bigger picture bike and head plan as well. So we're continuing those activities, those planning activities, and ultimately, I think those will result in some future additions to what you're seeing here as well. So that's all gonna be part of this package. We also know that this is a very high potential economic development project as well. We're talking about extending progress pathway, opening up new parcels for future development. We're talking about redoing the frontage roads, bringing them up to standards, making new and better connections that complement both existing businesses and have potential for new businesses as well. So I think there's gonna be a real synergy of existing and potential future businesses out there. That's, I think that's, safety comes first, but there's this really exciting second economic development component to this project that I guess it's really fun to be a part of. As far as a package deal, yes, all of these components do need to work together. This whole thing has to be done as a package in order for it to work correctly. So that's important. We're talking about really a 34-plus million dollar investment in the city of Evlith. These opportunities don't come along very often. I mean, they come along at once in a career for someone like myself. They come along, you know, once in a generation for the city. And so we need to take advantage of that. We're looking, as Dwayne said, at multiple funding sources to try to deliver this project. Hopefully, we'll be able to cobble together more than one source to accomplish all of this. And so for you today, there's a number of resolutions that are basically asking for your support for those funding applications. And then also importantly, you are being asked to basically approve the preliminary intersection designs that are in your package. So that would be our ask today, and we'll stand for any questions.
Well, this has always been a problem, Mary, out there. I know Mindot and the county have worked with the city through the years, so we're all well aware. And now with the school, it's really made an opportunity to make this happen, and this is a project that's ever happened out there. And the economic impact, I think, will be just huge for the city, and plus the safety factor. They're both combined into one thing, so you're getting more bang for your buck either way there. And I appreciate all the effort that the county and Mindot has put in there. It came up with some really good ideas, good solutions to make this work, and have a 21st century frontage road out there on the highway, and meet all those specifications. And like I say, people don't like change, but when I look at the statistics, the numbers justify the change. And it's like anything else, I can just see, envision what's gonna go on. Even the construction phase, when they did that bridge going to Virginia, the restaurants were full of vehicles from the contractors, the businesses, and this project's probably gonna take two years, I imagine, anyway. And just the influx of money into the community and the region from that is just huge. But I'm pretty excited about all this that's happening here, and hopefully I'll be, I'll still be above this side of the grass when it gets done to see the result.
We also do.
But no, that's, anybody else have any questions?
Well, I don't wanna have to shoot the messengers. I've been against this proposal, not in its entirely just a roundabout. I have no problem with economic development of any kind. I'm glad that the county's finally come north of Coak or of Cotton to help us out up here, rather than putting all their money down in Duluth and all those big towns down there. We need some help up here, and St. Louis County's gotta find a way to get it up here, and I'm glad you're finally stepping in and doing that for us. The roundabout to me is, the one thing I can't go for, but I understand that this is a package, and I will not stop the city of Evlith from getting any economic development or safety, as long as there is safety up there. My concern is for the kids, of course, but I still think stoplights are the better thing there. You've got stoplights in Virginia, you got in two intersections, and if you count the third one over on the far north end of Virginia, you have stoplights. You build brand-new entrances into the stoplights, you can turn into the Super 1, or you can turn into the Holiday and Target, no problem, and everybody's having, they're good there. I can't understand why we can't have that same position there. Other than that, that's the only, that's the only thing I have. Concerned about a roundabout is that we have traffic on there with big equipment, semi-trucks, people going to work in a hurry, kids going to school probably in a hurry, and there's gonna, could be some accidents there that just aren't warranted. Some people don't go 20 miles an hour. I've seen it happen here. And the first time I go out to Highway 37 and come from Hibby, and there's a semi stuck on the roundabout in a, you know, because there was snow in there. It wasn't cleaned out well enough, and that's another concern. People were driving west on 37, had to go through the parking lot of the convenience store to continue on their way. You know, those are things that I just saw, and I'm sure there's a lot of other people that do that. But I will not hinder our economic development in this town. It's badly needed, and I'm, the bridge repair, our frontage road, I'm all for that. But I just, just have a concern about that roundabout. And that's, that was my take on it. I appreciate all the work you guys have put into it, and I look forward to coming through with it.
Any further discussion?
I'll just reiterate, thank you very much for your consideration and dealing with us all these months. We appreciate it greatly.
Well, no further discussion. I'll call for a motion that we approve the resolution approving Rockwood School Transportation Improvement Plans.
So moved.
Motion made by Rousey, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Lillis. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item two, resolution of support requesting funding for Highway 53 Rockwood School Transportation Improvement Plans.
So moved.
Motion made by Lillis, we have a support.
Support.
Is it you, Jim, or?
No, it's Joe.
Joe.
Support by Koyvenen. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item number three, letter of support for corridors of commerce grant application for Rockwood School Transportation Improvement along US Highway 53.
So moved.
Motion made by Purpich, support?
Nope.
Or Joe?
Well, you guys sound alike after your little vacation. Motion made by Koyvenen, support?
Support.
Support by Rousey. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item number four, letter of support for rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainability raise grant application for Rockwood School Transportation Improvement along US Highway 53 in Evlith, Minnesota.
So moved.
Motion made by Lillis, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Koyvenen. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Well, I have to thank you guys for coming, and I can hardly wait till the shovel start digging. Thank you for all your support. Item number five, here we got. You've got a change here.
You've got a change here, one little line.
Item number five, St. Louis County Rural Ambulance Service Assistance Funding Contract under item 10. One, two, three, four, five, six down. Specific point where patient is picked up. The change was pickups must be outside the corporate city limits of the municipality where the reporting ambulance is located. That is the only change to that agreement. Did I say that right, Tries?
Um, it's, the funding is different.
Okay, that's... Any questions on that change?
What is considered our area?
As far as this contract goes, if this is, St. Louis County reimburses us for any call that originates outside of city limits, and their last resolution was from October 9th, 1984, and that was the funding, 1984. That was the funding that we were going off of for all of these years. So of course, you know, we wanted, we had asked the county if they would step up and perhaps be able to pitch in a little bit more money to help area ambulances with us. And we spoke up a few times, and they heard us. So they have increased the rate, $7 per call, up to $23. So every call we have that originates outside of city limits, we get $23 per call and 22 cents a mile. So that's, that's a change from that 1984 resolution, which isn't a lot, but we will take anything that we can get. So, you know, it brings us in some additional revenues for the year, so that's...
So when you have a call outside of city limits, are you talking about going out like to Cherry or to Cotton or any place like that? That's outside of your limits?
They all central lake, you know, Pyke, and Clinton, and yeah, anything outside of city limits.
And that, who determines who goes where? 911 or?
Um, we, we all have primary service areas or PSA, and those are set by the legislature. Those were set in 1992, and they're really kind of messy. And one of our new emergency medical services, where the trade board can place for the state, was going to keep this on within COVID. So for instance, Virginia has like the Elsberg, Melrose area, so they have to drive all the way through our coal service area to get back to theirs. It's just, it's really, really messy. So that's when you'd be looked at by the EMSR, and it needs to go through.
Multiple channels.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, those are predetermined by law.
Yeah, 'cause it seems awful funny that Virginia would have to go up there when there's someplace.
Oh, it's just goofy. We have part of the whiskey road, not at Bywabik.
Oh, yeah?
Which is blocked out on the boulders.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, it's the whole, every EMS.
I've got a question. So wait a minute, though. You're telling me that if there's a call in Pike, that's, we used to call that the Pike River area, you have to go all the way through Virginia down that county road and then come down the, because there are a few houses on that.
Right.
That's your...
Part of it, part of it is Bywabik, part of it is Evlith, and part of it is Virginia.
I don't know, I don't know who could get there sooner.
Even Bywabik would have to go all the way down 53 and 169. So of course, at that point, but like, no, no, somebody else is closer.
Aurora is closer, 'cause they could go up very soon.
Yeah, right. It'll be whatever is best for them.
Okay, well, hopefully, hopefully your board takes care of it, and they got new lines drawn for you.
Just a quick question. Like, let's say last year, we had, we had like over 800 calls. How many of them are out of the area? What'd you got?
Like, mutually aid to other times?
Well, like for the county, when we have...
How many, how many times did you?
How many times have we gone out of the area out of 800 calls?
I actually don't have that specific data. Um, most, everything is within our primary service area, you know, which includes Central Lakes and Kail and whatnot. But I don't have the exact in...
Look, I was just wondering.
I don't know. I would guess somewhere around 50%.
Okay, well, that's kind of what I wanted to know.
70% maybe?
So if we got 825 calls or 800 calls, it's 400 out of the area.
Correct.
Gives me a ballpark figure. I just...
Yeah, I, I think so.
Okay.
I think I might, I could be way higher.
Are you thinking of city limits or service area?
The services, like we get to $23 now, or they get to $23?
Corporate limits.
Yeah.
So they, this area, but this would apply to calls outside the city proper.
Yeah.
Corporate limits.
Okay, answer my question.
So all the calls in fail, that would be subject to the fee or the assistance. Thank you very much.
Any further, any other questions? If not, call for a motion that we approve this service contract.
So I'll move.
Motion made by Purpich, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Koyvenen. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
I don't know if I can vote on that or not, so I'm just gonna abstain.
You came here for nothing?
I came here for the lunch, and you didn't provide that either.
Item number six, request to hire additional EMTs. Need five additional EMTs. No one has any questions? I'll call for a motion that we approve this request.
So moved.
Motion made by Lillis, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Koyvenen. Any further discussion?
Abstain.
Can you wait till I finish?
I gotta get it in now before you jab me again.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Man, you're rude.
You okay with that?
I'm hungry. I gotta get home for...
They're good? I mean, are, the qualifications are, are all good?
Oh, yeah. Item number eight, resolution authorizing the city of Evlith to make application to and accept funds from the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, Fel Pon Trails.
Then we do this a lot.
Yeah.
So I'll so move.
Motion made by Koyvenen, do we have a support?
Support.
Support by Rousey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Authorized Public Works Director to submit request for placement on the project priority list for drinking water and clean water revolving funds for 2024 projects. Do you actually need council approval for that? Do you have any questions?
I knew it sneaked something in.
Oh, yeah, he's gotta do something. He's gotta get his name in all the time. We should start asking for a dump truck or something.
Yeah.
We still have to decide what we wanna do for 2024, as we remember the horse main got backed up to 2024. But there's other projects we may wanna do, but I have to get in these applications a year in advance, so that's kinda trying to get this step out of the way.
Yeah.
And then we can decide what else you guys wanna do.
Anything to improve our drinking water.
Any further discussion? Did I get a motion and a support, Steph? Call for a motion to authorize the Public Works Director.
Support.
Then we make a motion? You're making a motion, Jim?
Yes.
You got a support to that?
Support.
Yep. Give it to him.
Support by Rousey. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item number 10, First Amendment to Letter of Attention for Purchase, Sale, and Development of Real Property Within the City of Evlith, between the City of Evlith and Boris Ford Band of Chipola. I see they just changed the date on there by a few days. So I've changed on that. Hard to believe paperwork takes that long, eh? But if no one has any questions, I'll call for a motion that we approve this amendment.
Has this been, is it approved by our, our council?
Yeah, we approved the original.
Okay.
So moved.
Who made, you made the motion, John?
I was...
Oh, you're, okay, as one of your prime supporters.
I was going to, but he talks louder than me.
Motion made by Lillis, support by Rousey. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item 11, MOUs between the City of Evlith and Law Enforcement Labor Service regarding new officer vacation and 401K contributions. Jack, what has changed there that we?
We clarified that officers are awarded their vacation because the language was a little messy.
Oh, okay.
And then also, the city's contribution to the 401K, there's some statutory requirements that weren't, we weren't quite in alignment with. So LALSS understands it, agreeable to all of these. They'd actually already signed these documents. I was coming to you for a little.
Anybody have any questions? If not, I'll call for a motion that we approve this item?
So moved.
Do you have a support? Jim, you made that?
Yeah.
Do you have support to that?
I support.
Support by Koyvenen. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Item number 12, introduction and first reading of an ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance number 71, second series, cable franchise to MediaCom, Minnesota LLC. That was what we had the public hearing for, and this is the first reading. No one has any questions? I'll call for a motion that we approve this first reading.
So moved.
Motion made by Koyvenen, we have a support.
I'll support.
Support by Purpich. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item 13, 2023, Council, Board, and Committee Liaison Appointments. Everybody have a good chance to look. We did a little cleanup on it, but pretty much stayed close to the same. No one has any questions? Call for a motion that we approve these Board and Committee Liaison Appointments.
So moved.
Motion made by Lillis, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Koyvenen. Worked by Coivin, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Well, that takes care of new business for this evening. And anybody have any commission or board updates?
At, there we go. At HRA, but it was mostly organizational, if I remember correctly. Brian, was there any pertinent business or any, anything big? We didn't put nothing out on bids.
I think you were appointed Chair of the Board again.
Yes, I was.
We all congratulated you.
I was, I was jimmyed into it.
Yeah?
Fast, too.
Yes, it was, didn't take long. But no, it was mostly just organizational, and we're running up and running, everything's good, there was no problems. And that's that for that.
That's it, nothing else?
Well, I'll wait till the end of it.
Oh.
It's long later.
Joel, you got anything?
I have nothing.
Jim, of course, you were gone for two months, Senator.
He's got the tan to prove it. No, I'm sorry to say I wasn't as prepared as I thought I was going to be today. Can understand a little jet lag.
Brian, you got anything to?
Well, we did have an EDA meeting, and we did call for bids on the downtown revitalization Pocket Park project. So we're excited to hear back what the bids are going to look like. And that was, that was the whole purpose of that meeting was to. The, oh, yeah, and that was, well, the special meeting was strictly the Pocket Park. But, you know, we also have called for bids for improvements at the Lincoln Place apartment, so. So we're going to be up in the air, and hopefully, we'll get some decent bids and make some improvements.
Well, you got to keep moving forward, that's all.
It's going to look a lot better than it does now.
Yeah, it'll get away, get away from some of the issues.
It's going to look a lot better.
Lincoln Place with the water pooling in the parking area or near the building and so forth. Some improvements that have been needed for a very long time. They're very expensive, so it took a little while to put everything together. That's all I have, Mary.
Well, I think we just had one airport commission meeting. That was kind of a take care of business for last year, we finished up on. And we have one new member from Virginia there, Virginia Council. So we got another one this Thursday now, our first actual meeting of the new, new commission for this year.
Seems like a nice guy.
Uh, Thursday, but that's.
Older guy.
That's kind of about all I have, other than the few workshops we had concerning the projects on here, but. Chief, you got anything to add?
Nothing to add, Eric, talk to her.
Jerry, you got anything else?
Nothing else, Mary, thanks.
Ellen?
Working here, thank you.
Joel?
Uh, no mayor, thank you.
Steph? Jackie, good. Anyone from the council have anything?
Yes, it behooves me, it behooves us.
I love that statement.
Last meeting, I gave a shout out to the PV for all the help that they give us on the ambulance. And I'm speaking, and I know that the council appreciates everything I'm about to say also. But working hand in hand with these people, I get to experience their help, and it is tremendous. So this week, our meeting, I would like to give a call out to the fire department. Unbeknownst to a lot of people, firemen do a lot more than just put out fires. They assist in whatever ways are necessary to help and improve public safety and welfare. When we call for a lift assist, we need help. And it does behoove any homeowners to try and shovel out something to their street. Egress is half of the battle. If you can't get the patient out of the house safely, things go south. But with the help of the fire department, not only helping us get people out of the house and across Snowberry Hills, they're on the scene of traffic accidents for traffic control, which is a big safety factor. And they come at any time that they're called. And I just wanted to thank them tremendously for the help that they provide. Altogether, we are helping make this town safer and better for the people that need us.
How was that?
Well said, counselor, thank you.
Yes, it was.
And ditto from me as well. You know, it's, and it, you know, people don't appreciate that it's a volunteer organization for all the service that they give us, it's very much appreciated.
You know, I always, and I said this, we had a meeting the other day, and I said it, well, we thank, you know, this, this crew and that crew. I want to thank our whole crew. I mean, everybody that works here for the city of Evlith, in the city hall, Police Department, Works Department, because I'm going on nineteen years here, and this is, we got a great crew. You know, very seldom do we have any big problems that we can overcome. And I'd just like to thank you all, I think you're all doing a damn good job.
Nope, you're absolutely right, it takes, takes a team, you know. What sticks in my mind is that Halloween snowstorm in ninety-one. I remember our crews had all they could do to try to open up the main streets, but people were calling in a panic, they couldn't open their house doors because the snow was piled up.
We had a very serious call on that day. And they called up Public Works, and they came with the big loaders, and they got us to the scene, and they cleared right up to the door, and it saved lives.
Because I know everybody was shoveling, police and fire department, ambulance people going to people's houses in their own vehicles, shoveling them out so they could open the door, because there is a real panic. If you had a house fire, they couldn't get out. I mean, that was as bad as it gets, situation like that. Three feet of snow, you know, overnight, but. Anyone else in the council have anything to add? If not, does anyone from the audience want to address the council at this moment? If not, I'll adjourn the meeting.